I'd like to call the Common Council of the City of Lafayette to order would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please conduct a roll call.
Heidi.
Here.
Clinker.
Here.
Nargie.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Brown. Allersmeyer.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Quorum President.
You have received the minutes of the, uh, May second meeting and the documents of that meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept it. Mrs. Williamson. And that's all. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Presentation and disposal of claims.
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications.
There are none.
Reports of city offices on file.
Fleet maintenance, monthly April, water pollution control department, monthly April, police department, monthly March and April, and water works department, monthly April.
All of those reports are on file in the city clerk's office and may be examined at any time during hours. Ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero nine, an amendment to ordinance number eighty-five dash twelve as last amended by ordinance two thousand fifteen dash twenty-one concerning charges for sewage services.
Ms. Allersmeyer.
Assistant Attorney here in support of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero nine.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Any discussion by members of the common council? There being none, anyone in the audience wish to address this particular issue? There being none, once again, the common council, no comments, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on the final reading for ordinance two thousand sixteen dash nine.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown. Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
There is an ordinance that is go- that is connected to that and, um, should we accept that as this particular ordinance? Very good, okay. Ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash ten, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Tidgena County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from R one B to NB six twenty North Twenty-Sixth Street, Brian Andrews petitioner.
Mr. Clinker.
I move here ordinance two thousand sixteen dash ten on first reading, Mr. President.
Second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion by members of the common council? There being none, yes, sir.
Campbell, uh, ladies and gentlemen, Dan Teeter, attorney of Ryan Teeter and Schreier, represent the petitioner. Eric Peterson and Brian Andrews are both, uh, principals in this matter. Uh, as you're aware, we're requesting a rezone from R one B to NB with a commitment. Uh, we've received a favorable approval from the area plan commission with a twelve yes to one no vote. This is both for the zoning and for the commitment request. The commitment, uh, excludes most NB uses except for a contractor's office, which is what we're proposing for this site. All activity must be done indoors and under the, uh, unified zoning ordinance, no outside operation can occur, uh, no outside storage can occur. Uh, the commitment also excludes all retail uses, so it's very narrow, it will only be for this particular use. Uh, petitioner's family, uh, purchased this property or built this property in, in the early nineteen forties. Um, a few years ago, it fell into disrepair, petitioner then came in and redid the property, both inside and outside. Get an opportunity to go out and take a look, it's beautiful, he's done a, uh, tremendous job with it. They put a solid fence along the south side, also along the west side, decorative wrought iron fence along the north side as well. The property's gonna be used as a business office for petitioner's electrical business, that will be the only use in there. There'll be a bookkeeper and the two owners will be there on a tar- part-time basis, so we're only gonna have three, maybe four people ever at this particular site. Uh, one of the major customers, for example, is Subaru, so everything from Subaru goes directly to the work site, both for the employees and for the work product that they have or the materials that they have. This holds true for all their employ- or all their, uh, uh, customers, Subaru is just an example of that. Uh, in my opinion, the UZO, uh, in this particular instance is way too restrictive. We've got a carport on the site with a driveway, we've also got a one-car garage with a driveway, so we can handle four cars on the site. We've built, uh, a great deal of fencing, there's really nothing outside that's gonna occur, so there's no buffering that's really needed for the site. If you look at the two blocks here on Twenty-Sixth Street, we have Snuffy's on the north end, uh, it's been there for a long time, it is a commercial use. On the south end, there's four houses, they've been there for a long time, they are also a commercial use. In, in the middle of the block, then we have Sunnyside, and we've also got the Christian School. Uh, on this matter, we've met with the mayor, we've met with the council person, uh, Mrs. Williamson for this, uh, particular case, and we've also met with the neighborhood association, it would be my opinion, uh, that they would support our request for this. So we would respectfully request your approval, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, Mr. Brown.
Have a couple of, uh, the, uh, signings, the possible that will change for the, for this sign out front, what's the restrictions on signings?
In an NB, you can have forty square feet total for the area. My client indicates that if they would put a sign, it would be ten square feet, an outside sign would be ten square feet. As I told you before the council meeting, the church has asked if they could put a sign down there, would be a small, maybe five-foot sign to show direction basically to the church, which is to the west of the site.
Well, the signings, where would that go about next to the?
He has no plans to put it in now, he just.
Well, if, if they approve it, it's a.
Well, correct. And, uh, as I said, and I'm stating here, that, uh, if we did put a sign, it would not be in excess of ten square.
If you say people coming in and out, what about the parking situation there, are there gonna be a lot of people parking on Twenty-Sixth?
No. There's only gonna be three or four people at this site, there's gonna be the two owners, they're only gonna be there on a part-time basis, and there's gonna be a bookkeeper there and maybe an assistant bookkeeper. So we've got parking for four cars, we've got, one's a carport with a drive behind it, two cars, one's a garage with a driveway behind it and another two cars. So we have the capability for four cars, there will be no parking on this street.
I thought, what is it, possibly people would be coming in and out?
No, because nothing comes to this site, everything goes, as I said, like on Subaru, all the, uh, material goes to the site, all the employees go to the site, they never come to this site. This is just a bookkeeping site, so it's whether it's Subaru or all their other customers, nobody comes to this site.
And, see, I, I firmly spot so many, and I, and sometimes I start to think, oh, the.
Well, I don't, I don't believe it's a spot zoning, 'cause you already have Snuffy's down on one end, and on the other end, you got four, and you got two really commercial buildings in the middle with two schools. I don't know how, how that could be spot zoned. And the neighborhood, the neighborhood association doesn't believe it's spot zoning either, they'd rather see that something like this than a rental house, which has had not very good success in that area. Mr. Fisher's here, would like to speak in support of it as well, thank you. Any other questions on?
Any other questions, Mr. Fisher?
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Uh, not supportive of this, I mean, the APC gives upon, I guess, the, uh, a lot of the neighborhood, or they were afraid that this, that they're in the other movement, if it's all that.
Mr. Fisher will come up here, I've had no other movement on that, except for Mr. Fisher's comments at APC, and he'd like to reiterate those tonight for you. Okay, thank you.
I went to the April neighborhood meeting in the Sunnyside neighborhood, and they were all for it. They thought it was great, they, they love what he's done to the house, they appreciate everything he's done, and they were very much for it.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher.
Thanks, Ron.
Oh. Norville, your step up.
Okay. Mr. President, members of the council, Nord Fisher. Twenty-six oh one Elizabeth Street, directly across Twenty-Sixth Street from this rezone, proposed rezone, let's put it that way. It's in the Sunnyside neighborhood. We formed in nineteen, uh, in twenty fourteen, and we're not a really an old neighborhood association, but we do have some dedicated members that like to chill up and make sure that things are on the even keel. Lori couldn't be here tonight, she's our president pro tem, I, I call her that anyway, and she gotta handle the meetings and keep things in order, so, so we do things, and she sends her regrets. The boundaries of the association are from Ferry Street to Union Street and from Eighteenth Street to Earl Avenue. Got three schools in there, we've got a park in there, we've got everything in there, really, this is one of the, probably the best neighborhoods in Lafayette, as far as I'm concerned. My wife and I are no strangers to this neighborhood, in sixty-three, we bought our first house at five twelve North Twenty-seventh. Anybody remember the old wireless wire, down there on Casey Street? Katonk, 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 katonk. That's the way I went to sleep at night, listening to that kinda stuff, but that was, it was still good. I don't have any arguments with that at all, I mean, they were there first, and, and that was okay, so that was fine with me, I bought the house knowing they were down there, so we didn't have any problems with that. It was a quiet neighborhood back in sixty-three, not too much traffic, especially on North Twenty-seventh Street, which is kinda dead-ended at the Christian School and Casey Street down there. But over the years, the traffic has markedly increased. I would like to point out that there are many commercial types of business, this is, uh, sprung up on North Twenty-Sixth Street in our association. From Ferry Street to Casey Street, you've got the IU health doctors' offices, you've got the medical arts building, and you got the IU cancer center. From Casey Street to Brown Street, you've got a dentist's office, you've got the Pink Team Cleaning Services, you've got triple-A trimming, pre-trimming service, you've got inner waves massage, and you've also got a little Pentecostal church that meets in a house down there, just to the south of Sunnyside. From Brown to Elizabeth, we've got two schools, and there'll be a thousand students there next year, about seven hundred in Sunnyside, Christian will have three hundred. Plus, we've got the bus barn back behind Sunnyside, that gives us an extra one hundred school buses to put up with every morning and every afternoon. Not the quiet neighborhood as it was when I moved in there. And then when we go, okay, there's another massage parlor, too, that's directly across from, a couple houses down from me, and a proposed rezone would be right across the street from me on Twenty-Sixth. Incidentally, that side of Twenty-Sixth Street has no parking on it, Bob, at all, that's closed off, it's parked on my side over there. From Elizabeth to Union, we have Snuffy's Plumbing Service, and we've got the office of the CPA. If you total that list up, that gives you fourteen commercial type entities that are involved on Twenty-Sixth Street in the Sunnyside neighborhood. So that's the basic reason, and we didn't think that this rezone was, was really out of context at all when we looked at that. It's not unusual. The neighborhood along North, North Twenty-Sixth is not near as quiet as it was in nineteen seventy-six. Many cars and buses taking children to and from school between seven-thirty and eight, and three to three-thirty make for a lot of foot traffic, make for a lot of school bus traffic, and make for a lot of vehicles. Christian brings all their kids in by car, and the buses from Sunnyside, there's probably between fifteen and twenty that come in there in the morning, every morning. A little of the history of that proposed, uh, rezone area, the property's always been in the Andrews family, Deborah and Brian were raised in the house, uh, his folks were still living there when we moved over in our house in nineteen seventy-six. And Deb lived in the property after the parents died. She had a small kitchen fire in twenty fifteen, and she moved into an apartment, and son Brian took over, and he upgraded the property, as, uh, Mr. Attorney said there. He's going to live it himself, he tried to sell it, he tried to rent it, could find no takers, Brian, being an electrician, was going to go into business, and he decided that the home place would make a good office for him, still keeping the property in the Andrews name, and that was the main thing. One of the primary goals of the Sunnyside neighborhood is the houses, upkeep of the houses, and Brian's done a wonderful job on that, really getting that in there. It's in good condition, this rezone fits in perfectly, this business is quiet, two or three people in the office at any one time, hardly any foot traffic, they don't sell anything out of that office, it's, it's there. They do estimating, so they come in in the morning, secretary's there, and, uh, if you got any questions, I mean, we, we don't see anything that's hard to work or do at all. Mr. Andrews has worked alongside the neighborhood association for the past four or five months, answering all of our questions, and the fifty-seven exclusions that were, you know, in the APC package, I've seen you guys, you've seen them in your package, too. And the ten-square-foot sign is another one that's been added to that since that time. So, uh, overall, six of the seven most affected neighbors of this rezone, going with two, 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 and two, on all the corners, uh, have no problems, and have given their approval to our neighborhood association. The neighborhood would indeed be happy to have dyed electrical business offices part of our neighborhood, a yes vote on this rezone would be very much appreciated by our association. Anybody have any questions I'm not able to answer?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other people in the audience wish to address this particular rezone? Any further questions by members of the common council? Then if the clerk would call a roll?
Heidi.
No.
Clinker.
Yes.
Nargie.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Brown. Allersmeyer. Williamson.
Yes.
Downing. Ordinance passes five to two with one abstention.
Thank you. Ordinance two thousand and sixteen dash eleven.
An ordinance to amend the amended ordinance two thousand fifteen dash seventeen, an ordinance fixing the salaries of the appointed officers and employees of the City of Lafayette, Indiana for the year two thousand sixteen, excluding the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire departments.
Mr. Heidi.
Uh, moved here ordinance two thousand sixteen dash eleven.
Mr. Clinker.
Second.
Mayor.
Mr. President, ladies and gen-
Wait, excuse me, I'm sorry, I, slipping up. Are there any comments or questions by members of the common council? Mayor, Mayor?
Now, you threw me off, I forgot what I was gonna say.
(laughing).
Mr. Campbell, President of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight to talk about this ordinance. As you see in front of you, it's to create a new position, which is the Assistant Director of the Economic Development Department. Um, as we always do here at the City of Lafayette, we're continually evaluating our operations, how we have our department staff, how we task our work, how we look at efficiency, and, uh, look for new opportunities that we think will move us forward in the future. Uh, early in the year, we had a staff member that left the Economic Development Department, which gave us a, a good opportunity, uh, to make those evaluations. So working with the Director, Dennis Carson, and the City Controller, Mike Jones, and myself, we really began to sit down and look at where do we want that department to be? Where do we want it to be now, five years and ten years into the future? How do we, do we wanna divide up the task? What skill sets do we think we need? Uh, what we're doing here in the community is becoming much more complicated as we deal with economic development, uh, community development, quality of life issues, how we bring those all together, and we know there's a lot of overlap in them to make us a, a growing vibrant community that we are, and certainly this council has played a, a significant role, uh, in helping make that happen. And, uh, after we looked at all that, we really decided that we didn't just need to fill the position that we originally had in its same capacity, that we did need an individual that would have a larger skill set, have the capacity to handle more and complex tasks, uh, help us bring some of those important issues together in an efficient way, uh, that we really felt had that overall community knowledge. And so we wrote up a new job description, working with Kim Meyer in the, uh, Human Resource Department, and we came up with this Assistant Director of Economic Development. It'll be a PAT five, which has a, a range of, of the mid-fifties to the mid-sixties, which we think will allow us to get the, uh, individual that, or we hope individuals that will apply, that will have these skill sets, uh, that we are looking at. I've met with the Controller, we've, as you know, we manage our money very closely, uh, and we save money whenever we can, and this will be revenue neutral, we are not asking the council for any additional appropriation of funds. Uh, to create this position, we'll do it within the budget that the council had already passed, and, uh, we're able to do that. So we would appreciate, uh, your support of this ordinance and the creation of this new position, we think it positions us well for the future.
Any questions from the mayor? There being none, thank you, Mayor. Any comments by members of the audience? There being none, once again, the council, none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance two thousand sixteen dash eleven?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twelve.
An ordinance concerning refunding by the City of Lafayette, Indiana, the Sures Refunding Revenue Bonds of two thousand six, authorizing the issuance of Sewage Works Refunding Revenue Bonds for such purpose, providing for collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenue of Sewage Works and safeguarding of interests of the owners of said Sewage Works Refunding Revenue Bonds, other matters connected there within, and repealing ordinances inconsistent therewith.
Any comments by members of the common council?
Bring it to the table.
Move, good. And second, Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
Any comments by members of the common council? Mayor?
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, that's a mouthful, what Cindy just read to each all, and all of you. Uh, but what that really boils down to is the refunding of the Sewage Works Revenue Bonds of two thousand and six. And this council will remember that over the last several years, we have refunded several bonds throughout the city, whether it's in utilities, the redevelopment, uh, office, or just in general through civil cities such as parks and recreation. With the, uh, uh, very favorable market conditions when it comes to interest rates, we've been able to refund many of those, uh, bonds to save the city and the taxpayers significant money, and in some cases, reduce the time of, of those bond issues. Uh, just to give you some examples, we redid about six bonds that you probably remember a few years ago in the redevelopment office, uh, which saved us a significant amount of money in the millions. We did the same thing in the Parks Department, which saved us about, uh, five hundred thousand. This bond here that we'll be redoing will save us a little over one point five million dollars, um, net present value of about four point eight percent, certainly well above the two percent that's required by ordinance, and well above the three percent that the, uh, National Association of Finance Officers recommend. So this is another good opportunity for us literally to save, you know, millions of dollars. And if you look over the course of what we've been able to do with some of those different bonds, uh, you know, we're probably close, uh, to the five million dollar range in savings, simply by taking, uh, taking the opportunities to refund these while market conditions are favorable, interest rates are low, and so this is another opportunity. We continually evaluate, uh, using our outside legal counsel, our local legal counsel, our, our financial consultants, we are continually looking at our bonds, continually looking when things mature, uh, what opportunities we might have for those refundings, and this is one that now, uh, presents itself. And so I would appreciate your support on this, again, uh, it's another good way for us to be good stewards of our, this is utility money, of our utility rate payers, uh, and as all of you know, we have significant projects to do in the future. Uh, we are a CSO community that has a judicial agreement, so you know the long-term control plan that we need to work on over the next twenty years, and we have several large projects coming, so these types of savings can play a significant role in how we end up financing them in the future also, and how we use our depreciation accounts and some of that money that we can carry over. So, uh, it is really important that we do this, and that we're vigilant on how we manage those finances, so I really would appreciate, uh, your support. What we're gonna do now, if you don't have any additional questions for me, and if you do, I'll be happy to answer them, but I'm gonna call up, uh, Dennis Otten of Bose McKinnon Evans, he's gonna go through the legal process with you, um, to, uh, make sure that everybody understands that. We'll then have a representative of Crow Howard that will come up, which is our financial advisor, and last, we'll have a representative of Piper Jaffrey, uh, come up, talk to you a little bit about the bond placement, they're the company that will be helping us with that bond, uh, placement. So after that, again, any additional questions that you might have? Perry.
Just conceptual question, Mr. Mayor. Since, there's a possibility of, uh, I guess, long-term interest rates going up, uh, are we in any kind of authority, or should we be in any kind of authority to refund this other, uh, other debt of the city, my head?
Well, we continually look at the bonds, not all bonds are automatically refundable, there are certain time constraints, certain year limitations, uh, that a lot of those bonds have, and, and it's understandable, because that helps what sheaves some of the rate when you can refund those, and so, but we do continually look at those, and we've done a significant number of them over the, uh, over the last three years, and we'll continue to evaluate those a- as they do present an opportunity. But just because we have those bonds, because the way the bond documents are written, they're not automatically refundable just at our whim when we think the market's good, there are some restrictions, uh, certainly for us, but we'll continue to evaluate those. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, do you have some insider information? (laughing).
If you do, please don't share it.
(laughing).
I'm not gonna come visit you in jail, so, yeah.
Any other questions of the mayor? Yes, sir, you wanna provide those, gentlemen?
Uh, Dennis, if you wanna come up, Dennis is with the law firm of Bose McKinnon Evans, and they're with our outside legal counsel.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Dennis Otten with Bose McKinnon Evans, uh, we're the bond counsel on this transaction, and, uh, it looks like, I, I remember, most of you were here in two thousand and thirteen, and if you remember back then, when we did the sewer refunding bond issue, that one was, I think, about fifty-eight million dollars. We're doing the same thing now, and it's just like the mayor said, it's to, uh, get us savings on interest rates, your payment dates aren't going to change, it's like refinancing a house, what's going to happen is your debt payments are gonna be lower, and that's savings for the utilities. Um, now legally, what do we have to do to get this done? You've got this big document in front of you, and hopefully you read every single word of it, it's, it's the bond ordinance, and we draft that, that's the contract for the bondholders. So when these bonds go out and get sold, that's in the offering document, uh, that Crow Horwath will prepare, uh, and that's what bondholders look to when they hold these bonds, to know what the covenants are. Um, if you've ever looked at the sewer bond ordinance, they all look a lot, they, they have little subtle differences, but they're pretty much the same. Uh, so this bond ordinance here, if you read the first page, you'll see it authorizes the issuance of bonds for not to exceed twenty-two million, six hundred thousand dollars to refund the two thousand six bonds, which are currently outstanding in the amount of twenty-two million, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. There's interest rate parameters in the bond ordinances, discount provisions, redemption features in the bond ordinance. We work with Crow Horwath and Piper Jaffray in compiling that information ahead of time before we draft this bond ordinance to provide something that we think will be appealing to the marketplace. So this also follows the flow of funds that are in your existing sewer bond ordinances and your covenants. These bonds, when they are issued, are gonna be on a parity with your outstanding sewer bonds, first on the sewer revenues. Um, and other than that, it looks a lot like your other sewer bond ordinances, so, so where do we go from here? We're asking you to introduce this ordinance tonight, and then adopt it at your next meeting. We can't, this is one of those bond issues, like the mayor said, uh, Councilmember Brown, I think you had a question about timing and interest rates? Well, this bond issue, because the bond issue we're refunding was a refunding issue, we have to do what's called a current refunding, we can't close this bond issue until the first part of October, it's a federal tax rule. But we're at a point now where we adopt the bond ordinance, then we'll have to apply for a rating, get the offering document together, so it's perfect timing to get this rolling, 'cause when all that's done, we'll be in a position to sell bonds, hopefully in late September, and close in early October and take advantage of the interest rates. Um, the forms of financing agreements you'll enter into, the city will enter into, are attached as forms. Um, and actually, that's all I've got, anyone have any questions?
You mentioned October.
Yes.
So will this come back to us then, when you have some final figures, or what occurs from that standpoint?
No, the, the way it works, we will get. No, the, the way it works, we will get the count, the, the bond ordinance will get adopted, and in terms of when, I think your question may be, you know, when is the city finally locked in, or when are you locked in? We will coordinate with the Controller, Mike Jones' office, and, and the Mayor's office. There'll be conference calls leading up to the pricing to say, okay, it doesn't make sense to market these bonds at current savings levels, and, and part of that discussion will be your financial advisor and Piper Jaffray, but ultimately, the pricing will be within the parameters that are in this ordinance. We can't exceed the rates, or extend the maturities or anything like that without coming back, and we don't envision that we would do that.
Thank you. Any other questions to this gentleman? Thank you very much. Mayor, you want to introduce the next gentleman? Would you like, would you like to introduce yourself?
Good evening, I'm Michael Amore from Crow Horwath, financial advisor for the city. As Dennis mentioned, this would be same payment dates as your current 2006 refunding bonds. There wouldn't be any extension of the life of the bond, it'll pay off in the exact same timeframe as the '06 bonds would, looking at it just right around nine years. We're looking at refunding approximately $22 million, and issuing just over $19 million, and this will produce average annual savings of approximately $218,000, which equates to approximately just over 7.5 percent.
Any questions to this gentleman? Thank you very much.
Landen gets his ceiling surgery real easy, so listen to him.
Mayor, Landen with Piper Jaffray. I'm going to hand a one-page summary out.
Should have had walk-up music like a banner or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so, what I've done here is just summarized, from a statistical perspective, what you all can expect to look at insofar as Perry, the market stays where we're at, from the refunding and the results that the city achieves as far as interest rate savings. The top portion of data here is just a summary of debt, as Michael just reiterated, regarding the bonds that we're looking at, and what is outstanding of the bonds. It's essentially a nine-year debt maturing the first part of 2025, and as Dennis mentioned, due to tax code restrictions, we can't close till mid-October, which would put us reasonably within a pricing range of, at the earliest mid-September, and preferentially in late September. The current average rate is 3.656 percent. If you guys jog your memory back three years, I think the average rate on the conglomerate of four series that we refunded at that time for the total $58 million was a lot higher than the 3.65, more in the, the four to five range. So, when you compare savings, and adjust for the par amount that we're actually touching here, it's a little less, because you're taking out debt that's already at lower, you know, interest rate levels. Nonetheless, as the Mayor explained, the market is still thriving as far as interest rates, and it's interesting, because I think, you know, we all look at the effects of the market in our personal lives, like a mortgage and, you know, any, any other form of loan, and the flip side, which is how much money can we make in our savings account, which has been basically nothing, right? How does that have impact on, on what we're looking at here? And there's all the media hype of when the Federal Reserve is expected to act, right? And if you recall back in December, they acted for the first time in nine years with monetary policy, taking their target rate up of a quarter percent. When they did it, generally, the municipal market reacted in about a 20 basis point move on the front five years of, of the yield curve, which is the first half of the pricing of this. So, the relevant answer, I think, to Perry's initial inquiry, is what's the risk of, you know, the Federal Reserve acting again? And generally, I think we tend to speak of it in reference to a 20 basis point movement in the market. So, what I've done is I've taken, in the middle set of data here, which I've put in bold current market conditions, below that, we've done a cushioned analysis at that current market, plus a 20 basis point adverse move, just to give you guys expectations for what this finance and the results of refund, refunding would look like in a shifting market. And to summarize, you know, Michael's general points here, and, and like the Mayor introduced the topic, we're looking at about $1.8 million in gross savings right now, and this was run at the middle of last week, rates have come down a little since then. So, if you take the current and pull it off 20, your gross savings gets pulled down about a quarter of a million dollars to 1.54 million. So, that's about the sensitivity of every movement in the market of about 20 basis points. So, the, you know, it's all speculation, but the latest read is that there's a potential they act in July, which we can't be in a position to act before then, at least on a tax-exempt basis. And so, you know, bearing that in mind, there is a risk that the current market plus 20 may be a reality for the city. However, we thought they were going to raise two years ago, right? And it's been a little more drawn out than everybody expected, so perhaps there's some hope that there's no more raises and the city sneaks us in ahead of the next raise. I guess the only other thing I wanted to do is put it in reference to three years ago, and at that time, we had a four-series refunding structure that we combined into one deal, which cuts out paying agent costs to the city, it, it took advantage of one-time fees from, you know, our professional services to take care of four transactions at once. And the current refunding concept that Dennis introduced is a more simple approach to refunding, whereas back in 2013, we did have one series that was an advanced refunding. So, Perry, I'd be like, if we could advance refund this right now and defuse it out for a six-month period or so. We don't have any of that complexity here, so the best way to think about this is the quickest we can act, we will act, because the longer you pay, the higher interest rate, you know, the less period of time you have to take advantage of the lower interest rate, and your savings deteriorate. So, that's our contemplated approach here, is to get in as quickly as we can, but at this time, we're getting into the preparatory phras, phases of getting the bond ready to market, so.
Any questions of this gentleman? I have one, what's the acronym, or acronym, GFOS?
Government Finance Officers Association.
Thank you. Any other question?
I thought you knew that.
Didn't.
He does now.
It's on the test. Good enough.
It's on the test?
Yep.
Any comments by members of the audience? There being none, one more chance for the members of the Council, none. Would the Clerk then conduct a roll call vote on Ordinance 2016-12?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Oliver Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Resolutions. Thank you, gentlemen.
Resolution 2016-07, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Lafayette and the local 472 Lafayette Firefighters Association, International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO.
Yes, sir.
I move to hear and approve Resolution 2016-07.
Yes, ma'am.
My second.
Any discussion by members of the Common Council? There being none. Mayor?
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Council, we're going to switch gears here on, you take a big shift from refinancing $22 million with the bonds to talk about union contract negotiations. As you know, the City of Lafayette has agreements with the Firefighters Union, the Paternal Order of Police, and the City of Lafayette Employees Alliance. This agreement here is between the Firefighters Local 472 with our local fire department. And just to give you a little bit of background, we began negotiations several months ago. The fire union put together a team headed up by their, their president, Todd Wagner, and several other members of the Lafayette Fire Department. We put together a bargaining group, the City of Lafayette and myself, and Cindy, and Mike Jones, and Chief Doyle, and Kim Meyer from the HR Department, and Ed, as our legal representative, and we really went to work. It, overall, I can say it was a very good negotiation. All parties involved came to the table with, with the right attitude, with the sense of trying to do the right things for the right reasons, to find common ground that we could agree on, and put together a contract that would be good for the Lafayette Fire Department and its members, for the City of Lafayette, and for the City of Lafayette Administration. And we had several meetings over a, a several-month period. We didn't agree on everything, but we agreed on most things, and we were able to find common ground on a lot of those that we weren't able to agree on, but we kind of reached a, a solution in the middle. So, overall, I felt like the negotiations went very well. It was then ratified by the union, and I was told by their president that that went very well, and that people were very pleased with the contract. I want to touch on just a, a couple of the highlights. You have a, the contract before you, a highlighted version in yellow that outlines most of the significant changes, and I'm going to touch based on just a couple of those. One of the things that we were able to do, we increased specialty pay within the fire department. As you know, several of the firefighters are engaged in different types of activities that require advanced certification and additional training in different specialties, and we were able to increase those amounts up to $500 for those specialties. It was, it was at $250, so we were able to get that up to $500 for each one of those specialties. We also were putting in place a workplace performance evaluation, which is the first time in the history of the fire department that we're going to have a, a physical fitness evaluation, to make sure that all our firefighters are fit and ready to do, for duty, and throughout the length of their career, will continue to need to meet that physical fitness standard. And we put a very fair, good process in place, and had a lot of input from a lot of different people, and that was part of the contract, and was ratified by the union member, so we were certainly pleased with that. We were also able to put in a longevity pay, and I'm not sure longevity pay is maybe the best word for it. Jerry and I had some discussions earlier this evening, but in, in principle, what that is, as you know, police and firefighter pensions under the new plan, and Jerry may argue under the old plan also, aren't really that good. I mean, there's just no other way to put it. You can work here a long time, and your pension is not going to be that strong, because it's based off either a journeyman fireman, or a first-class patrolman's pay, regardless of what rank you might have held throughout your career. All those calculations revert back to those two categories, and so, and 74 percent is what you can max out, and even at that level, you can't get any more than 74 percent after 32 years of service, and quite frankly, 32 years of service is a long time for people in these two professions. So, what we were able to do was reach an agreement where, after the completion of the 19th year on the fire department, they're going to be able to take, we're going to take $1,500 of their $2,000 clothing allotment, and we're actually going to put that on to the base salary, and that will become the salary then, that their pension will be based off on going forward. So, if they stay three or four extra years, and you're adding that $1,500 to it, that will raise that number, that those pension calculations will be drawn from. We're not out any money on the front end, because it's the same $2,000, it's just being shuffled in a different way that originally went to clothing allotment. It will cost us a little bit more money on the back end when it comes to pensions, but we've done those calculations. It's a, a cost we can bear, and a cost that we think we should bear for the men and women at Lafayette Fire Department, and I'll be making the same offer to the Lafayette Police Department as we begin their contract negotiations, to the men and women that are out every day risking their lives for all of us in this community, to give them an opportunity to build that pension in a way that makes it more livable, still not going to be livable for them when they get ready to retire. And so, we thought that was a, a really good, and I can tell you that was very well received, very well received, as, as you can imagine, because it really does something to help look to the future. The other thing we were able to do, we were able to get a five-year agreement as opposed to a four-year agreement. That, you know, the negotiations are very time-consuming, and so, being able to put a contract together that everybody on both sides felt was so good and so strong, that both parties were able to agree that it could be a five-year agreement, was also another big step for us, so we're certainly pleased that we were able to get that five-year agreement. So, at the end of the day, good negotiations, good contract, good things in there for all parties involved, and with the new equipment that we're buying for the Lafayette Fire Department, I think we're positioning ourselves very well for now and for in the future. So, we would appreciate your consideration of ratifying this to this resolution. I'm not sure if there is a representative from the Lafayette Fire Department Union here, but if there is, I'm certainly want to give them the opportunity to, to add, to talk also, if they would like. But before that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Jerry?
Yes, Mayor, just one question. The deputy chief and assistant chief pay, where's the battalion chief? Is it not included in here? Are, are battalion chiefs now getting assistant chiefs pay?
Well, that's a question I might have to refer to Mike Jones.
Inspector?
Chief Doyle.
All right. Chief Doyle, yes. Same pay. How, how many are there now? Assistant chiefs?
Training and, uh...
Drawing same pay. How many total, battalion chiefs and assistant chiefs drawing same pay?
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one question.
Uh-huh.
How often will a physical fitness test be administered?
Once a year.
Once a year for all?
All firefighters, from the chief on down. Everybody has to do it.
Any other questions from the Mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a representative here from the fire union?
We, we, I just offered the opportunity to, 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 to President of the Union, he is working on it, so I'm sure he's, he's excited, and something that's keeping him away, if you want.
Any questions and or comments by members of the audience? There being none, once again, members of the Common Council, would the Clerk then conduct a roll call vote?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Oliver Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Resolution 2016-8.
A resolution approving a deduction for tax abatement in an economic revital, revitalization area, Sanow America, personal property tax abatement.
Mayor, you're a busy person.
Mr. President?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Mr. President, I move here and approve Resolution 2016-08.
Ninety.
Second.
Yep, both got caught up there.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Council, you have before you a request for a tax abatement for personal property, machinery and equipment from Sanow America. We're pleased to bring this before you this evening. As you know, they are a tier-one supplier to SIA, they're going to be investing a little bit over $5 million in machinery and equipment, and hire over time 62 positions. They are a manufacturer of tubular materials that are part of the fuel system and engine components of automobiles, and like I said, they're a tier-one supplier...
Yeah, both got caught up there.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, you have before you a request for a tax abatement for personal property, machinery and equipment from Sano America. We're pleased to bring this before you this evening. As you know, they are a tier-one supplier to SIA. They're going to be investing a little bit over five million dollars in machinery and equipment and hire over time sixty-two positions. They are a manufacturer of tubular materials that are part of the fuel system and engine components of automobiles, and like I said, they're a tier-one supplier to SIA. So as SIA continues to grow, which we are very pleased with that, we hope to continue to attract suppliers like Sano America to the, to the community. We certainly, I want to thank the council. You know, I can't thank you enough. You have been very good about helping create a strong business environment that sends the message really to the world that, you know, Lafayette is open for business. And by doing the work that you've done, even through the tough economic downturn, you know, we helped a lot of our companies through that difficult period, and we kept them going, and we emerged out of that really quite stronger than when we went in. We actually grabbed market share in some of those areas, and you were also very helpful in continuing to do infrastructure projects, looking at the state-certified industrial park. You know, we really didn't roll up the sidewalks here. We kept pushing forward so we'd be prepared, and this is just another example of that work. So certainly would appreciate your support of this resolution. It passed the redevelopment commission earlier and on May twenty-sixth. We do have a representative from Sano America here that'd like to come up and talk to you just briefly a little bit about the project and a little bit about their company. And when that's finished, again, if there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for the mayor presently? Thank you, Mayor. Ron, you want to step forward?
Yes.
I remember your name.
Yeah, it's a good thing to remember. Mr. Campbell and the members of the council, I appreciate your opportunity to present before you the information about Sano America. I'm the director of finance for the company and located in Finley, Ohio. I also have Mr. William Jones with me tonight, who's the operations manager who will be located here in Lafayette. To let you know a little bit about Sano America, we're a tier-one supplier to the Japanese OEMs, including Subaru. Subaru's one of our good customers that we service. We also service all the other Japanese car manufacturers. Our products are basically tubular components for the automotive vehicle, with the primary being the brake and fuel line sets. So we're looking to be here in Lafayette to produce the brake and fuel lines for the Subaru plant here. And we want to be a member of the Lafayette community. Do you have any questions for me about?
What is a tier-one?
Tier-one is we directly supply to the OEMs. So we don't, the majority of our products are all tier-one from all of our facilities, so we ship directly to the OEMs instead of through another company which may subassemble our parts onto another assembly that is then shipped to the OEMs.
The acronym?
OEM?
Original.
Original Equipment Manuf-.
Sorry, no, I was gonna, I was just saying original equipment manufacturer.
Any questions of this show? Thank you.
How about me? Can I have? Sixty-two hires, is that local? Are you going to bring people in, or?
The majority of the people will be from the Lafayette. We're going to hire here locally. We have a few people that are relocating from another location, but they will become part of the Lafayette community. So there's not going to be anybody who's commuting on a permanent basis.
Any other questions? Thank you. Members of the audience, does anyone want you to address this particular abatement? There being, yes, sir?
I have a question for the city attorney. Just wanted to make sure, since this is an SIA, it's a different tier-one that answers through. I know a lot of SIA ones I cannot vote for and abstain, but since this is tier-one and I'm a contractor for SIA, I think it's okay to vote for this.
I don't believe there's a conflict. If you feel uncomfortable, you can.
No, I, I feel comfortable. I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions by members of the county council? There being none, with the clerk then conduct a roll call vote, please.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing? Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Resolution two thousand sixteen dash nine.
A resolution in support of community crossings matching grant application.
What is the pleasure of the council? Mr. Downing? Mrs. Williams? Members of the county council wish to address this resolution. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Jenny Leschne, city engineer, council members, President Campbell. Before you, I have a resolution committing funding for a grant. We are looking to apply for a fifty-fifty matching grant through the Indiana Department of Transportation. The last legislative session, there was funding that was allocated for additional road improvement projects and even some maintenance work, and that is being administered through Endot. The timeframe for this grant is very compressed. The applications open, opened on May thirty-first, and the deadline to submit those applications is July fifteenth, so we had a very short window. And what I'm asking you to do tonight is to commit to a million dollars in matching funds should we be successful in getting this grant. Not knowing whether or not our projects will be accepted, it's not a firm funding commitment at this time, but it's an intention to get the match should we be successful in obtaining the grant. We have listed many funds just for the flexibility. We are hearing from Endot, there's only three or four of these funds that can qualify as matching, but we're also hearing from the State Board of Accounts in the next legislative session that they're going to add additional funds that will count toward the match. So we thought to cover all bases, we would include all the potential funding sources, and that way, as we move forward, and if we are successful in getting the grant, then Mr. Jones and the council could then decide which funds would be best appropriate, to appropriate from, for that match.
So we have, Mr. Jones, I'm guessing, eight-hundred-thousand dollars, or is that what it would take for matching?
If we receive a million, we're committing a million, so our projects would total two million.
Any other questions by?
When we apply for that, will we use the data that so many surrounding counties that don't pay wheel tax folks here, that have to pay the wheel tax for our roads to stay nice? But with all those folks that come in here, will we use that, that a hundred thousand extra cars come here, and so we should be able to get the grant? Is that the kind of data that you will use when you apply?
There's a, there's a couple of things that are required for the grant. First of all, we have to submit an asset management plan, which fortunately, we have that, so we're able to provide that. But Endot has said they're going to evaluate and score each project based on a couple of things. First would be connectivity to existing plans. So if, if, you know, one, one road here is being done and the other, another road here, the connection between the two. Also, the benefit and the need and the quality of the project. So anything with AADT, traffic counts, large traffic counts, and then also projects of regional economic significance. And I have a little blurb which Endot kind of defined as that. A regionally significant economic development project means a transportation project that is on a facility which serves regional transportation needs, such as access to and from the area outside the region, major activity centers in the region, major planned developments such as new malls, sports complexes, industrial parks, or transportation terminals, as well as most terminals themselves, and any facilities that offer alternative to regional highway travel. So they have some very specific criteria that we are hoping to meet with that.
Sounds like we still, we fall under that regional hub kind of.
We're actually applying for three different projects, hoping one or more of these three projects will, will move forward, and that's okay with you, Mayor, I can go ahead and announce those. We're looking at Cassou Street between Faraby and then what will be our new Sagamore Parkway project. That's one section that is not in, but that connects two roads that will be significantly improved. The other would be to resurface South Street from Earl Avenue to the river, and then the portion of Columbia Street from the split to where we finished at Seventh. And then the third project would be Union Street from Creasy to the split, and then Salem from the split to the river. The advantage of some of those would be adding the bike lanes on Union Street. It's part of our Bike Master Plan, so that gives you alternative transportation. And also, the Cassou Street one connects two regionally significant projects, and then the, the third one, Colombian South Street, is, is our largest traffic generating street. So we picked three projects that we felt would hit all of those topics so that we could submit all three and see which one, or part of one, or two, actually get funded.
So the, the, the speed of having to get the application in was very short. How about the speed of having to use the funds?
We are able, they have now put a deadline on the use of funds. The intention would be to use these funds in seventeen, because Endot has said if they receive all the applications by July fifteenth, they hope to award their projects by August second. Then there's a six-to-eight week timeframe where we enter into a contract with Endot, and then following that, that timeframe, they would cut us the check. We'd have to also appropriate our match, so now we're talking the middle to the end of September before, before we'd have the funding, and, and to do a road project that late in the year would be difficult, so we would be able to do it next year.
So some of these other road projects will be closing up and have some.
Yes, yes. Not only that, they're going to be doing a second round of funding in January, so if we were unsuccessful at getting in on this round of funding, we would have everything in place to reapply in January for next year's funding.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, we can.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any comments by members of the audience? Yes, sir.
I'm interested in how this is going to tie in with the construction that's already going on that's got us tied up to the point we can't get customers right now. Cassou Street is a major artery to get around the overflow on Twenty-Sixth that you can't, you can't get through in the morning. It takes a considerable tie-up. Sometimes it's backed up all the way to Creasy Lane. And if we tie up Cassou Street, then that makes us wait that much longer to get up to Sagamore Parkway where it can be used. The north end of Sagamore Parkway has been over two years so far, and people are dying on the vine, businesses are dying on the vine up there, and nothing is being done about it. Everybody seems to turn a deaf ear to it. Now, if we mess up Union Street again and mess up Cassou Street again before this other project is done, we are dead on the vine. Does anybody not understand that?
I just asked a question.
If we do Cassou Street, it'll, it'll be done in the timeframe as, after we finish up the northern end of Sagamore Parkway, and will be part of the middle section of the Sagamore Parkway project. That area that we're talking about is to the east of Sagamore Parkway that would widen Cassou Street there up to Faraby to make that all four lanes, which makes it a very good connector at that point, and it would be done when those other two projects are done as part of the middle section of Sagamore Parkway. That we'll probably bid in 2017 if all, if all goes well, and we'd also would plan to rebuild the railroad track at that crossing there, right there by the Laurel Lee Trailer Park, because we know that that needs it. So we would do the widening project, create some sidewalks, trail connectivity, ADA, meet all those requirements, do the railroad crossing, and widen the road as part of that project. So those other two end segments would be done by the time that we would do that. And the same thing, if we would happen to be lucky enough to get the money to resurface Union Street, that would be done after those others were completed. That would be mostly a mill and resurface. There'd probably be some ADA work with handicap ramps at certain strategic locations, along with the implementation, as Ginny indicated, of, of the bike lane, which is mostly just striping. So I think that, I understand Lloyd's concerns. I think the timing of that will work well with the grant and the appropriation process that this council would have to go through to actually appropriate the money and the timeframes that Endot has set up for, so I think we can make that all work. We're certainly aware of the traffic restrictions that are in place right now, and we're working, you know, as fast as the weather will allow to continue these projects. But I'll reiterate again, you know, these projects are going to position this community for five, ten years, fifteen, twenty generations of people down the road. We are the fifth fastest-growing county in, in the state of Indiana right now, and as you remember, last year Forbes Magazine ranked us the number-two best small metro in the United States for business and careers, and all of that requires, part of being able to achieve that is infrastructure improvements. And I think we're fortunate that we're not like a lot of communities that literally are dying on the vine, the entire community, because they don't have the funds available to do these infrastructure projects to continue to move the community forward. And so, again, we certainly appreciate Lloyd's comments. I understand his passion for what's taking place, and we're going to continue to push these projects out as quickly as possible, time them with other new money, but we don't want to lose a chance to get a million-dollar matching grant. We're going to spend that million dollars anyway on ro, on projects that we would be doing, and so if we can get another million to match that, and if we got really good projects that maybe, as you heard, would tie into that next round, we've got a chance to significantly upgrade some of the other ulteriors here in the community and the thoroughfares, again, with some good pedestrian and bicycle facilities that's good for overall quality of life.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments from the audience? There being none, council members? Clerk then conduct a roll call vote on resolution two thousand sixteen dash nine.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash ten.
A resolution to approve the city of Lafayette Community Development Block Grant and the Lafayette Housing Consortium Home Program Action Plan for two thousand sixteen.
What's the pleasure of the council? Second? Any questions or comments before we have the summary? Thank you.
Council, my name is Michelle Reynolds, Lafayette Housing Authority, also the federal grant administrator for the city of Lafayette. We're requesting approval for the annual resolution for the home and CDVG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the project year 2016, which will begin on July first. As part of the action plan, the citizen participation plan has been modified for when a substantial amendment to the action plan is required. The current threshold is set for changes over twenty-five thousand, and the new threshold will be ten percent of each of the grants. The city of Lafayette is an entitlement city and receives CDVG funds. CDVG is Community Development Block Grant Funds. We had two public meetings that were held. We also, just to kind of let you know what those things fund, CDVG funds, social services, public facility improvements, public infrastructure, removal of unsafe buildings, housing administration. The sixteen CDVG allocation is five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, eight-fifteen. Prior year reallocation is sixty-three, one-forty-two, and that's a total for six-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, nine-fifty-seven. The city of Lafayette is part of the Lafayette Housing Consortium, which includes Lafayette, West Lafayette, Town of Battleground, and the unincorporated areas of Pitts-Kinney County. There was two public meetings, and the housing consortium approved the action plan for homes. Home funds, homeownership activities, rental activities, and administration, and the allocation for sixteen is six-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, four-thirty-three. Prior year is sixty-six-thousand, zero-seventy-four, and the total is six-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, five-oh-seven. And I respectfully request approval of this resolution.
Any questions of the summary? There being none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions and or comments from members of the audience? There being none, council? With the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on resolution two thousand sixteen dash ten.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Now for fun and games. Mr. Chosnick?
Well, the mayor, the mayor is going.
Oh, the mayor's going to do it?
He's trying to go through the.
Are you tired of seeing me tonight?
No, sir.
Never.
Okay, before you have the statements of benefits for compliance for the tax abatements here in, in the city of Lafayette, most of you have been through this many times as we look yearly at how those compliance statements and how our, our local companies are doing.
we look yearly at how those compliance statements and how our, our local companies are doing. Before we get started, I do want to thank the council again, as I did a little bit earlier. You know, we compete in a global economy, whether it's for creating new jobs, creating new investment, or simply retaining the jobs that we currently have. It's a very competitive marketplace and this council has been instrumental in helping create that business environment that allow people to make investments, that allow the community to grow, create those jobs, retain those jobs, that really make this a vibrant community. And I think that, again, is, is evident by the designation that we received from Forbes. Before you, we're going to go through these. I've talked to Mr. Campbell and I've talked to the city attorney and I'm going to group these in a way that will hopefully make it as painless for you as possible. We're in very good shape this year. We actually only have two companies that are not in compliance of, of all these abatements and I'll talk about those a little bit. And so, it should be easy. But, again, I really do want to thank you. Through the investments that have been made, we stabilized our tax base for the entire community, again, through the work that this council did, through the four strategic annexations that we've done over the last several years, for the growth that our businesses have been able to have and the increase in assessed valuation that we've been able to create. It really does play a significant role as we stabilize the tax base, increase those revenues, coit, edit, things that come along with job creation, that really gives us the opportunity then to provide those essential and basic services to our citizens, but also implement the quality of life initiatives that we want to have. And I, I can't thank you enough for your support, some of you for the entire thirteen years on things like this and then the infrastructure that we've been able to put in. You lose track a little bit of time, but if you think of all the infrastructure that we've put in, it really has been phenomenal from those of you that were here when we mined the tunnel underneath downtown. I mean, most people forgot about that already, that there's a tunnel underneath downtown. So, with that, Cindy, do they have the, the one that actually makes the corrections that you pointed out to me right before we started on the abatement link?
Yeah.
So, they have ones that show those.
Ray Magnet.
Show those corrections.
Yeah.
Ray Magnet.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, first of all, we have, the first two abatements are JAK Partners, which is Kirby Risk. They have two real estate abatements, two thousand and seven, two thousand and twelve, and the length of those abatements are ten years. They are not currently in compliance for those two abatements. As you know, they are a tier one supplier to Caterpillar, most of you are familiar, with the electrical harnesses that they make and, and the work that they do for Cat and then for other companies throughout the globe. A lot of the work that they do is related to the mining industry, the gas industry, the oil industry, and as you know, that's been down particularly for Caterpillar too. And so, that has affected their numbers. But, as you know, Kirby Risk is a homegrown Lafayette community that has been here for a very long time. They're actively involved in the community. They are great corporate citizens and Doug Mansfield and Jim Risk get very involved in a lot of community activities that deal with quality of life and things to make this community a great place to live. So, I would personally appreciate your support and finding them in compliance. The redevelopment commission did find them in compliance because this is a market condition that is beyond their control. But, with that, I'll turn it over to Doug Mansfield of Kirby Risk to, to make a few comments.
Mayor, before you stop, let's, so that we get, we know the ground rules. We are going to talk about two companies presently, Kirby Risk and.
Ray Magnet.
Ray Mag- Wire Magnet, okay. Then we're going to consider each of these companies that are also asking for tax abatement who are in compliance. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, we are not going to go through each, as we've done in the past, and I thank you folks if this is correct, that we are not going to go through each one of these individually and ask for a motion and a vote on those particular individual companies.
Well, I think what the city attorney has advised that he would like to see is we will go through the individual companies, but let's say Alcoa has two. I'll read both of Alcoa's. You can make one motion to vote on both of those. SIA has numerous ones. I'll read them, but you can make mo- one motion to approve all of those SIA abatements. So, it will cut down the complexity and the time a little bit. I, I don't think we can get that to where you can just vote in kind of one lump sum. I am going to have to read them, but I am going to group them in a way that should move the process along.
Very good, thank you. Yes, sir.
President Campbell and the members of council, I'm Doug Mansfield, president of manufacturing for Kirby Risk. First, I want to thank the mayor for the kind words about our company. We are one of those tier one suppliers to global OEMs and the plant I'm talking about makes wiring harnesses and control panels and our product goes on our customers' product. And so, when our customers do well, we do well and when they don't do well, it trickles down to us. We, our customers are in a lot of different markets. They're not in automotive, unfortunately. They're not in aerospace, they're not in medical. These are all doing well. Our customers in off-road vehicles, which is not doing too well right now. They're in mining and you know where mining's at presently, it's, it's in bad shape. Power generation, which is about okay, but the only thing there is for data centers and that's about it. We picked up a new customer five years ago in rail and the, we did really well with them, but in January first of two thousand fifteen, their engine for their locomotive, which we make controls for, does not meet the US emissions requirement. So, they cannot sell locomotives in North America and that business dropped eighty percent. They will have a solution in the future, don't have it right now. We deal with ag equipment companies, they're off thirty-five to forty percent currently this year. And then the big one that really tipped the tide was oil and gas. A lot of the equipment that we make for our customers go into fracking operations and you know where that's at. It's the only time I really wanted to pay more for a gallon of gas. The strong dollar has hurt the exporting and we do a lot of, our customers do a lot of exporting, so it's been tough. Our revenue has fallen over fifty percent in the last year and it's not like two thousand nine. Everybody went down and you could see a future, it's kind of like a V. Right now with oil and gas and mining and so, we're desperately seeking new customers. Takes us three years to bring on a new customer. So, our market's flat, but the good news is I think we're at the bottom. We're going to hire ten new people this month and start the process back up to where we were in the past, just about a year and a half ago. So, we appreciate your consideration for our company and our abatements. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions of that gentleman? Thank you.
Okay, well, I'd entertain, Mr. Campbell, if you'd entertain a motion then to find JAK Partners, Kirby Risk, in substantial compliance for their two real estate abatements, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Dowey? Mr. Williamson? All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same side, thank you.
The next item is Ray Magnet Wire. They have two personal property abatements from two thousand and three and two thousand and twelve. They are not in compliance and the length of those abatements are ten year on the personal property and seven year on the second personal property. Again, it's one of those situations where the wire, and the gentleman was going to be here tonight, the plant manager, and I got a text from Jody Hamilton a few minutes, well, before the meeting started, he wasn't going to be able to make it because of the situation in one of the plants he's responsible for. You did get the presentation at the caucus meeting on Wednesday. As you know, again, the wire business is down right now. They also are working to find new customers and they are actually making some larger gauge wire than they have been making in the past, which they hope is going to help. I think one thing that's important to remember, and many of you were on the council at the time, you know, there was a time when, when Ray was in, in deep trouble and they, they were consolidating plants across the United States, deciding which operations would stay open, which would close. We fought very hard to keep the Lafayette operations alive and we were successful in doing that and not only were we successful, but the equipment, the ovens and the work that was shut down with the plant in New Mexico actually came to Lafayette, which helped stabilize the plant here local. But, that is, again, that wire business is a tough business. It depends on how other markets are doing throughout the United States. And I know from what, speaking with them and from what they talked about at the caucus, I mean, they are, they are working very hard. And again, I think it's a company we need to stick with. They've been here a long time and I think they're doing the right things. If we stick with them like we have other times, they'll, they'll pull themselves out of this. So, there is not a representative from the company here tonight. I'd have to answer any other questions that you might have, but if you don't, I would appreciate your vote on finding Ray Magnet in substantial compliance.
Any questions of the mayor, first of all?
It starts when the equipment's all in place, so sometimes they grant it and.
Sometimes they come, we grant it and they don't get started as quick or the equipment doesn't come in and it doesn't start on the, the actual year. It's the same thing as you look at some of the machinery and equipment, it's not always the exact same dollar amount because sometimes when they go buy it, they get a better deal than they thought and sometimes they go buy it, they get a worse deal than they thought. It's like when we buy something. So, that's why those numbers don't always line up just exactly.
It, you know, the way the taxes are assessed, they're assessed a year behind and, and the abatement starts the, the first assessment of the personal property and within then ten years after that. So, I'm going to, I don't have what you have in front of me, but. Yeah, it.
We probably aren't taking a couple of years to pick it all up and with it being a year in the rears, that, that makes sense.
Any other questions? Mr. Allersmeyer? Mr. Brown? All of the favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both, thank you.
Thank you, gets easier now. The, the next two are for Alcoa. They have one from two thousand and twelve with, which is real estate and they have one from two thousand and twelve, which is personal property. Both of those are ten years and they are both in substantial compliance and were found so by the redevelopment commission. So, I would entertain a motion to find them in compliance.
Mr. Heidi, or excuse me.
TRW is supposed to have been removed, it's in the county.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Heidi? Mr. Clinker?
Second.
All of the favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, thank you. Go ahead, mayor.
The next one on the agenda is Castle Coke, it's two thousand and nine. It's a real estate abatement for, the length was ten years and they are in substantial compliance.
Mr. Clinker?
I move to find them in substantial compliance.
My second.
Thank you. All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, thank you.
The next one is ET Pure, that's the building where General Electric is housed. They have a abatement that was granted in two thousand and fourteen for real estate for ten years and they are in substantial compliance.
All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next one is General Electric. They were granted the abatement in two thousand and fourteen, it's for personal property for a length of ten years and they are in substantial compliance.
Mr. Nargy?
Still moved?
Second.
All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, same side.
The next one is Heartland Automotive. It was granted in two thousand and twelve, it's for real estate for a period of ten years and they're in substantial compliance.
Motion.
Second.
All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, same side.
The next one is for Lifeson Brands, which is Copper Moon Coffee. They were granted one in two thousand and eleven for real estate for a length of ten years. They were granted a second one for personal property in two thousand and twelve for a length of seven years and they are in substantial compliance.
Mr. Nargy?
Still moved?
Second.
All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, thank you.
The next one is Non-Shown America. We have three for them. We have one in two thousand and eleven for real estate for a length of ten years. We have one in two thousand and eleven for personal property for a length of ten years and we have one in two thousand and fifteen for personal property for a length of ten years and they are in substantial compliance for all three of those.
Mr. Downing?
Still moved?
Mr. Williamson? All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The next one is for Oscar Winsky. They have one real estate abatement granted in the year twenty-seven, oh seven, for ten years and they are in substantial compliance.
Still moved? Mr. Brown, thank you. Mr. Allersmeyer? All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, thank you.
All right, next is SIA, so you can take a break for a minute because I've got a lot to read. They have one that was granted in two thousand and two, a real estate abatement for a length of ten years. They have one granted in two thousand and six for real estate for a length of ten years. They have one granted in two thousand and seven for real estate for a length of ten years. They have one in two thousand and nine for real estate for a length of ten years. They have one in two thousand and twelve for real estate for a length of ten years. They have one in two thousand and fourteen for real estate for a length of ten years. And they have one in two thousand and four for personal property for ten years, two thousand and five for personal property for ten years, two thousand and six for personal property for ten years, two thousand and seven for personal property for ten years, two thousand and nine for personal property for ten years, two thousand and eleven for personal property for seven years, two thousand and twelve, personal property for seven years, two thousand and fourteen, personal property for ten years. And they are in substantial compliance for all those abatements.
Mr. Heidi?
Still moved.
Mr. Clinker?
I should probably abstain from this one.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All of the, um, would the clerk make known that? All of the favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both. And one of six.
Thank you. The next one is Tate and Lyle. They have one abatement for personal property in two thousand and fourteen for a length of seven years and they are in substantial compliance.
Still moved?
Still moved. Mr. Nargy?
Second.
All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The next one is Toyota Motors. They have one in two thousand and six for personal property for a length of ten years. They have one in two thousand and ten for personal property for a length of ten years and they are in substantial compliance.
All of the favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Next is Walbach National. They have one in two thousand and eight for real estate for ten years. They have one in two thousand and eight for personal property for ten years. They have one in two thousand and eleven for personal property for seven years and they have one in two thousand and twelve for personal property for seven years and they are in substantial compliance of all those abatements.
All of the favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the final one is Vorvog's Coating, two thousand and fourteen, personal property. They have one for seven years.
Mr. Heidi?
Still moved.
Mr. Clinker?
Second.
All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, thank you.
Again, thank you for your cooperation. Hope we made that as quick and as painless as possible.
I have a question on, on the Toyota one, since their relationship is ending here in July and it's all going to be Subaru, are those transferring to SIA or is something else happening of those offsite? Will they, they'll fall out of compliance next year?
Yeah, but they've real, well, yeah, but they've really met and exceeded in a lot of areas, so we'll deal with that. Thank you again. I text Cindy real quick, we were talking, we, we have Chief Flannely here and tonight was supposed to be his update for the police department. We originally took it off the agenda because we weren't sure how long this was going to last, but we got through it a little bit quicker than we thought. Would you like to have Chief Flannely's update tonight or move it to, if he is here, or move it to a different night? The council doesn't have a, a preference, I would prefer to get it done tonight. He's here and he's prepared for it.
Yep.
Well, he's up for it and we're good for it.
And then we'll have one other announcement when that's done. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Flannely, I'm the chief of police. I promise I'll stick to my script and I'll get through this as quick as I can. Just to let you, to make you aware, our annual report is posted online on the LafayettePolice.com website. It's available also in, in the city clerk's office. Tonight, I'm just going to briefly touch on some of the highlights. If you want a more in-depth look at some of our data and our statistics, please take a look at it. If you want a more in-depth look at some of our data and our statistics, uh, please take a look at it. I would encourage you to do that anyway. It's a pretty substantial document, but it's a very comprehensive look at all the different things that the police department is engaged in. The work highlighted, uh, in that report represents some, just of the, of the tremendous accomplishments of the men and women of this agency. The statistics alone speak volumes about the challenges that we face on a daily basis, but if you look beyond the numbers, the true dedication and professionalism really shines through. Now, police work is changing in many ways, most, most of which involves how we deploy and utilize technology, but behind all the technology we're using, we're still, at our core, are in the people business. Uh, the past year has been a challenging one for law enforcement, not just here in Lafayette or Indianapolis or the region, but around the nation and around the globe. The, the global war on terrorism continues to be a focus for law enforcement, and the scourge of drugs is an international epidemic that reaches all the way down into the core of our community, and I think a lot of the things that we experience here in Lafayette, uh, are directly reflective of that. Here at the Lafayette Police Department, we've been engaging directly with our community in many ways, uh, not just, that weren't even possible just a few we, uh, years ago. Our hallmark of this past year will be our growing efforts to create a citizen-driven policing philosophy that facilitates an ongoing dialogue between our officers and those we interact with every single day. We continue to seek every opportunity to expand our moving, our reach moving forward, not just using social media tools, but in every, everyday face-to-face interactions with the public. Throughout 2015, we built, we built on our existing partnerships through programs like our Citizens Police Academy, uh, Next Door, and our expanded Community Outreach Division and Crime Prevention Unit. We created new opportunities to interact with our officers through engagement strategies designed to educate and communicate with our citizens about the crime problems we are facing. In 2015, we expanded the number of police officers by adding five new positions specifically purposed to bolster our outreach efforts, which will help on the, uh, on the ongoing prescription drug and heroin epidemic. Uh, just to touch on, on some of the things that we've been doing in our outreach efforts, uh, many of you are aware John Townsend is our dare officer. Uh, he's, he's been instrumental in instructing over thirteen hundred local children at eight different area schools, and he's participated outside of that in, in approximately sixty different community events. We've hosted our, our Second Annual Junior Police Academy last year, and we're gearing up for our third, our third academy this, this July. It's coming next month. We've hosted two Citizens Academy classes for the past, well, each year for the past fifteen years. Uh, we did so again last year, and looking forward to, uh, forward to doing it again, uh, next year. We're getting ready to gear up our, our fall, off our course. Uh, just finished our, our spring course, and it was, again, a very successful course. Um, our, our Citizen Police Academies, uh, they never cease to amaze me. They, there's some great insights, and, and we really get to share all the day-to-day operations of the police department. It's, it's really important for us, critically important, as a matter of fact, because there, there's a lot of, uh, information in the public that most people don't, just maybe have a misperception about how the police department operates, and to give them a, a behind-the-scenes look is just, it's really, uh, been a great benefit to our agency. We, we are very active in our volunteer and police service, uh, program. We have twenty-four people involved in that program. We've had some back, dating back to, uh, as long as 2006. Sergeant Yustrebski has been in charge of our training academy, and he's been putting it to great use. We've just recently concluded a three-month-long polygraph school. Uh, the first time we've ever been able to host a school like that, it was, we were able to save, eventually we'll be able to save over twenty thousand dollars in training costs to the police department by getting slots into that school. Uh, we hosted people from around the country and even around the world. We had, uh, six students in that class from Nigeria, uh, one of which, by the way, said when he was done, that when he went back, he wanted to get his family and move back to live in Lafayette. We'll be waiting for him to come back. We've conducted over five hundred and sixty hours of in-house training at the, at the, at the center, and then close to a thousand hours overall with outside agencies and other, uh, community partners. Uh, Nora Ashcraft has been in our facility now for over a year. She's, she's our victim advocate. She works with the YWCA, and, and bringing her into the police department has just been, uh, it's just been very, it's been a great, a great partnership with the YWCA, um, and, and she's been able to communicate with our officers with ongoing issues regarding, um, protective orders and other things that we deal with on a daily basis, so it's been a great fit. Uh, we continue to host college interns. Uh, we have, we had eight last summer. I, I think we're expecting more this year, um, and some of the fruits of that were we actually hired, uh, one of our, our recent hirings, Israel Salazar completed that program, uh, through IBtech in 2015. Uh, thanks to, to your work, uh, and with the approval of Mayor Rosortsky and, and the city council, we were able to expand our police take-home program, the take-home car program. Uh, we, we have now been able to put eighteen cars out to date, um, adding car, police cars into our neighborhood, increasing our visibility, and we've been getting a lot of great feedback on that. People are noticing the cars out there. So it's been, uh, it's been an excellent morale boost for the officers, and it, it really is, uh, helping us, uh, to really have a presence in, in, in areas where maybe before we just hadn't, hadn't had that, um, impact. Our social media efforts, I mean, it's one, it is the future. It's, it's, it's our effort to try to reach people where they are, and that's on their mobile technology, whether it's on their phones, or iPads, or wherever they are. Uh, we, we continue to, to really, uh, try to exploit that at the Lafayette Police Department. Uh, we had kind of a significant breakthrough for us this, this past weekend where we hit the eighteen percent mark on Next Door. Over seven thousand, seven hundred households now are sharing information with us. Uh, we've had over five hundred messages just from the police department alone shared, and we know that there's been several thousand messages in between households. And so that, that for us is, is, uh, a great, uh, uh, it's, it's a great help to us because our, our community now becomes the eyes and ears for us. It's, and again, I like to call it our, you know, it's kind of community watch on, um, well, maybe I shouldn't use a steroids reference, but that's kind of what it's like. It's really getting everybody out there. So our goal, it was kind of a stretch goal. We really wanted to get to twenty percent by the end of this year. I think we're gonna beat that mark, and, uh, now we're gonna go for our new stretch goal at twenty-five percent. So that'll be one in four households. Every time we have a message that we need to get out, we know when we send it out on Next Door, we'll hit one in four households. So hopefully all of you are using it and, and enjoying it as well. In 2015, uh, we've experienced significant turnover in personnel due, due to retirement. We're just at that phase where the department expanded twenty years ago. Our administrative services has been tasked to meet those challenges, and they've been very aggressive in their recruitment strategies. Uh, so far, just this year alone, they've hit over twenty career fairs. We're doing things that we've never, um, had to do in the past, and we're thinking of every creative way we can to get the word out that we're looking for qualified applicants. We currently, because of retirements, uh, we have eight openings right now that we're hoping to fill, uh, this year. We have, uh, three that are going, um, to the merit board next month, so that should take care of some of those slots. But it is, it is a very challenging, uh, time right now to try to find qualified applicants that have that level of integrity and character that we really need. Um, you know, the mayor and I have discussed this many, many times. We're not gonna rush to hire anyone. We'll make sure that we, we get the best, the best applicants that we can find, and those that will meet our standards before we even consider, uh, moving them along in our process. But just as an example of that, uh, we've had fifty-five so far, uh, come through our process. Of the fifty-five, uh, that once, that took the test, thirteen, uh, didn't make it past the, the written test. Uh, twelve then subsequently didn't make it past the, the physical fitness requirements. So we're, we're losing almost half the applicants just right there in, in, um, in that phase, the first, really the first day of the, they move from there on to, um, uh, different phases of, of the hiring process, but nineteen of the twenty-five that we moved, uh, that we took through the polygraph, uh, process, uh, we were only able to move ten on from that, and then we, they go into our captain's board, and we, we had ten that went through that. Only six made it through, um, and then that's no guarantee that, you know, we'll be able to hire them. So we really run at about, and between a seven and a ten percent, uh, hiring rate. So for every one hundred applicants, you know, we're, we're hoping that we can find, uh, anywhere from, you know, right around ten that we think, well, we can present to the, to the merit board. Uh, last year continued to be another, uh, busy year from a, from a, a call volume perspective. In 2014, just as a comparison, we had three hundred thousand calls that came into our communication center with a generator, around ninety thousand calls for police service. In 2015, we were up about thirteen thousand, um, with a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred service calls generated. So our, our officers are continuing to work tirelessly to ensure that each call is handled and, and handled with the professionalism that our citizens expect and deserve. Uh, and at the same time, we continue to look for, uh, solutions, uh, to try to drive some of those numbers down. I think last year, we talked about our, one of those efforts being our, uh, alarm monitoring, uh, project. Just a quick, uh, update on that project. We had, uh, in 2015, we had a total of, uh, one thousand four hundred and eighty-five alarms that came in that we act, actually, uh, started to respond to. We had officers arrive at one thousand and seventy-three of those alarms. In 2016, uh, uh, eleven, I'm sorry, it was 2014, 2015. So the numbers were down from fourteen eighty-five to eleven twenty-five, and then the ones that the officers actually arrived on is now down to seven hundred. So, uh, the total alarm calls are down twenty-four percent, uh, which is significant from a time perspective for our officers, and thirty-four percent, uh, down thirty-four percent from the officers actually arriving. So, again, when we talked about starting to, to implement fines for, uh, repeat offenders and repeat violators, you know, the, you know, the, the object is not to fine anyone. It's really just to create compliance. If you're gonna have an alarm, make sure that it's working properly, um, and so when we, when we do get there, that, um, it's, it's providing the right type of value from, from the police department. And I, and I know, uh, from a technology perspective, uh, one of the things that, that we talked about, the big announcement this year was implementing the TASER Body Cam project. Uh, just to update you on that project, it is, we are in full implementation now with the body-worn cameras. We're still waiting on the in-car component of that. Uh, that should, hopefully, we'll be, uh, in the process of that late July, early August. We're still waiting to hear from TASER on, on when we can expect to do that. But that's created, uh, some, some changes in the way that we operate, and it's, it's, uh, really been a fantastic, uh, program so far. The officers, uh, they really, they really like it. Um, it creates new challenges so far to date, and just, in just under two months of this deployment, we've already generated almost eight terabytes of data, um, and well over twenty thousand videos. Uh, we've, we've had some cases that have, and it's creating some adjustments uh, in the whole criminal justice system. It's not just here in the police department, but, uh, we, we really believe that we selected the right technology. It's, it's done what we've hoped it would do, uh, in that it's minimized the amount of time officers have to spend sorting and categorizing video, and it's already, uh, saved significant amount of time for us from, in the administrative services division. Uh, even on some of the complaints that have come in, we've been able to look at them really quick. Um, the court cases that are, that are going down, uh, the videos, the evidence that we're capturing for these cases is, is, it's fantastic. So, uh, we're really looking forward to, uh, seeing how that progresses. So we'll build upon the work from 2015. We, we're well into 2016 now. Um, so it's, again, just as a reminder that the, the full, the full document is, uh, on display at the Lafayette Police Department website. Uh, we'll continue to do everything that we can to make sure that we're providing the best value that we can for the public service. Uh, I'm very proud to work for Lafayette Police Department. We've got some outstanding police officers that are, that are out there every day on our behalf in this community, and, um, I, I really do see, um, things from a law enforcement perspective. I, I, I think I see some, some bright lights on the horizon. It's been a tough, a tough couple of years, but I do, uh, uh, we, we definitely have some challenges ahead of us, but I think here at the Lafayette Police Department, we're, we're prepared well to face those challenges.
Uh, I would say, uh, Chief, on behalf of the city council, that you and the police department are to be commended for all the work you do. It's not an easy job, if we believe in media, um, but we thank you for all of those things that you do.
On behalf of the Lafayette Police Department, thanks, sir.
Any other comments to the chief?
I'd just like to thank, I was glad you touched on body cameras. If you didn't, I was. I was gonna say thank you for your role and your officer's role in embracing that. I think it shows a level of transparency and a commitment to professionalism, so thank you very much for that.
And I have one comment to say. I was on the merit board for a year, and I learned so much. Just the interviewing process and, and how they go about, you know, finding candidates and everything they go through, the interviewing, the testing, it was impressive. It was, I mean, I just couldn't believe what a great job you all did. So thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much, Chief, for informing us. We needed it. I think it becomes time for, uh, citizens' input and questions. Uh, I won't go through the routine of the, oh, oh. Down forward.
Very quick. Good evening. Uh, Chair Bishop, Communications and Marketing Director for the city. I just wanted to cordially invite you all to our Art in the Park Summer Art and Music Festival Series that starts tomorrow night from six to eight at Memorial Island in Colombian Park. Um, my department, along with parks, have worked very hard to kind of upgrade the Art in the Park series this year. We went after, um, and focused on getting sponsorships and grants, and so we've got a very healthy budget to work with, and we're bringing in a lot of live entertainment and some theme nights. Um, we'll have all the things you've come to love about Art in the Park, including the face painting and the balloon animals, but we're also gonna have, um, a lot of upgraded things like a craft station and some, uh, different live entertainment and people coming in, um, from really to give us a, a great perspective on all the different things we're be doing. So I just wanted to let you know of the dates really quickly and, and invite you all to come. Um, again, our first night is Celebration Night, which is June seventh. Um, June twenty-first is our Global Night. We'll have a lot of global influences and music. July twelfth is our Midsummer Night, where we'll be focusing on jazz and, and some campfire-type music. And then Ju- July twenty-sixth will feature the Lafayette Symphony Orchestra. And then our last night is August ninth, which is Back to School, where we're inviting nonprofits and, uh, food, like food finders and some other people to come out and give an education perspective on getting kids, um, ready for back to school and, and some other fun activities. So we hope you can join us. Thank you so much.
Can we bring marshmallows to that?
I, I believe there is some sort of, uh, fire ordinance of some sort with the park, so, uh, we'll, we'll have to be careful about that.
We will let you...
Lawdean watching afternoon, so...
We'll let you lead Kumbya, though.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have some tents and some Boy Scouts. It'll, it'll feel, you know, you'll feel it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments by members of the audience concerning their concerns?
Floyd Wells, thirty-seven seventeen Rawlings Drive. I want to congratulate you this evening for taking the position you did with the two companies who were not in compliance, because it is not of their making or their choosing that they didn't. And I would hope that you show the same compassion to these businesses on Sagamore Parkway when they fail to meet their obligations.
Thank you. Any other comments? Bill?
Mr. President, Council, I know it's been a long evening, and thank you for giving me just a couple of minutes here.
Phil, you better identify yourself.
I'm getting ready to do that. My name is Bill Miller. I'm co-president of the American Area Community Coalition. I live at eighty-one forty-three O State Road, twenty-five North. I'm here this evening to give you a quick update on a proposed thing, the Stone Quarry out on O State Road, twenty-five North. I was here last June. Uh, Rogers Group sued the Tippenee County Commissioners, the APC, the BZA, and the Building Commissioners. Uh, and in June, the Tippenee Superior Court won. Judge Randy Williams ruled in favor of the Tippenee County Commissioners. And also in June, Rogers Group appealed to the Indiana Appellate Court. In March twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen, three judges said the county commissioners didn't have the right to create the ordinance because it was a zoning ordinance. And they said the Rogers Group had to go to the APC, and the judges said that the Rogers Group need to obtain a special exceptions from the Board of Zoning. April twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen, Rogers Group asked for a rehearing stating there were several reasons for them not to go to BZA, and on May twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen, the appellate court of Indiana denied the rehearing. So now the Rogers Group have thirty days from May twenty-sixth to ask for a transfer to the State Supreme Court, or it goes back to the lower court. And if it goes to the State Supreme Court, it'll probably be another year before you see me. But I just want to give you an update and let you know this thing is not dead. Thank you very much. But I just want to give you an update and let you know this thing is not dead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sounds like the inflation of footballs and things. Any other comments? There being none. Mr. Heidi?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Thank you.